All right, good afternoon, Council. We have a committee of a whole meeting agenda for approval. Thank you. Adoption, all in favor? Hopefully, everyone got the slight amendment to the delegations. We have two delegations, not three. And we're going to have the representatives of all organizations, Steve Chambers and company, present first. So, welcome to the podium, sir. And you have the floor. Thank you very much. Good afternoon. Now, with me today is Jenny Farrell. We're going to jump in. I probably get myself sideways, so we have pretty hard questions to ask. So, I'm going to give a brief presentation on pickleball. I assume that maybe perhaps some of you have never heard of it. I know lots of people I've come up to, they scratch their head and wonder, what are you talking about? Pickleball was had in 1965, just south of us, in Bay Harbor Island, Washington. And it was, according to the U.S. Pickleball Association, the name came from a dog, Pickles, who likes to hide the ball. So, there's a bit of trivia for you. If anybody asks where this name come from, it's based upon the name of a dog. Quite just like that is. In terms of the sport, the sport has grown quite extensively. It's played quite a bit down in the southern states with lots of outdoor courts. This is what the game looks like. And it's, as I say, it's growing quite quickly. There are nearly 200,000 courts, or 200,000 players, 8,000 courts, and 250,000, well, 2,000, 500 places play in North America. And here in Canada, 290 places can play, with seven or 10 courts. And estimated number of players as of early this year of 14,000, of which 7,000 are believed to reside in British Columbia. So, it's quite popular here in B.C. And so, who are all these players? Well, there's more, some players playing pickleball. And I put up here a little bit of a list of where one can go to play the sport. There are some national organizations in the U.S., Spain, France, the Netherlands, and of course, here in Canada. And in B.C., here are, here's a short list of all the clubs that are currently in place. Here's more of those clubs. So, it is, it's growing by leaps and bounds. And you can see by a detailed examination of the list, that it's quite popular around that area. As an organization, we came together in just December of last year. And in five months, we've grown to a club of 121 members. We're quite pleased with that. And as some of our pickleball players come back to Comox Valley after spending time down south weeks back, we expect this number to continue to expand. By way of comparison, I believe the last piece of literature I could find on the Internet was that the tennis club has 160 members. So, that gives you some sort of sense of portion. And you would say, well, who plays pickleball? Isn't it just for seniors? Late last week, even though it was spring break, I was able to get, hold some of the staff at the school district, and they were providing some lists of names of some of the schools that play pickleball here in the Comox Valley. And I was told that this list was not complete list, but there are some examples of pickleball being played at the schools. So, it's quite likely that some of the youngsters in the community will know more of it than their parents will. So, where does one go and play pickleball with family and friends on a Saturday afternoon? Nowhere. Unlike tests, the Comox Valley does not provide free facilities for public use. How could this grievance and justice be addressed and corrected? I'm glad you asked that question. By the addition of permanent outdoor pickleball courts, which would complement the suite of excellent outdoor facilities already available in Comox. And the Pickleball Association would like to offer its support to such an endeavor. Here's a picture of the pickleball courts that were constructed over in Paul River. And to give you some sort of sense of what we're talking about in terms of cost, six pickleball courts fit in the same space as two tennis courts. And initial cost estimates for new courts, six new courts would be $50,000 to $60,000. You could alternatively resurface and convert to underutilized tennis courts for a cost of $18,000 to $25,000. So, let's go forward and make some outdoor pickleball courts. Let's make this happen. That's the presentation, and we'd love to take your questions.
Okay, questions from members of Council. Now, Mr. McKinnon.
Just thank you for the presentation, first of all. I noticed in my neighborhood that you were playing outdoor pickleball in the lower rank by the Highland Fields there. And it seemed to be well-attended and by lots of folks there. Was there a problem with that? Because that seems like a perfect site right there and not used a lot during, particularly during the daytime, when kids are in school and all that.
Right. So, there are, you'll see pickleball players play pickleball there. And I probably expected most of what you're seeing was part of a program offered through the Comox Rec Center. And then next, they're being used on property of the town of Comox designated for a program. So, that does fill the use. For those who want to join up, sign up for program, okay, to be, play on a Tuesday or Thursday afternoon, I think it was on mornings. But it doesn't fit the need for sort of spontaneous, you know, families or friends who wish to play. Most of the programs are either age-related or skill-related. So, unlike tennis, if I just want to go and play tennis with my daughter, I don't have to worry about her age or skill level. I just play tennis with my daughter. But not so with pickleball. Generally, you have to be with a group of seniors, or I get, I play with a set of people of a certain skill. So, it's not quite the same thing. Apart from that, the facility there is, is good from the perspective of its location. But there's no permanent hosts, and there's no permanent nets, and it's also a shared use area as well.
All right, Counselor Grant.
Yeah, I was just wondering, on your cost estimate stability, you've got $50,000 to $60,000. But we just did reader a tennis courts, and it was a half million dollars. So, that's quite a difference.
I appreciate that. And I, to come by that number, I did two things. I did an Internet search, and I spoke to Alan this morning about what his thoughts were in terms of the cost. And so, that's where that number comes from. And discussing the tennis ones, I understand that the base there was fundamentally an issue in terms of the soils and pre-disaster, pre some water and suchlike. So, that's where I expected the major cost of this would be.
And secondly, it seems to me that this would be a regional thing. I mean, not just people from Comox are going to come to play pickleball. So, would it not be more sensible to be having this as a, to be talking to the regional district about possibly doing this, encompassing everybody?
It may well be. I, you know, I'm certainly not the transition of these sorts of processes, and it could be an avenue or other opportunities with other organizations for certain.
Yeah, for example, there's a group that's looking at indoor tennis, like the Buffalo Tech Facility, and they've been working through the regional district on a feasibility study. I know there are different types of courts, but there may be some synergies perhaps. But anyway, we'll see. Counselor Ennam.
Yeah. With that, could you, could you not paint different lines in like an existing tennis court? You know, similar like a gym, gymnasium, they have all sorts of lines for different games. Could you have something similar to that on existing tennis courts? So that you can go in, okay, you know these lines of your pickleball?
Yeah, we talked about that as well. And it could be like, and I characterize this as adoption C, not an A, not a D, down with this. The difficulty got that the height of the nets are different. So, that poses a problem immediately. Currently, I think most of the nets are kind of locked in place. I've heard people talk about weighing them down. I'm not sure if that's really a sort of good solution for the, for the nets. And then you'll probably have to deal with complaints from both groups of tennis players and pickleball players about the lines being confusing. So, those are probably fundamental issues. And my initial thoughts were if you could, you know, keep both those communities apart, there'd probably be less animosity about competing.
Thank you. Again, thank you for coming. I know that I was able to participate in a bit of a pickleball challenge last year with Jim Stevenson, our former rec director. I don't think that caused him to go into retirement after I worked with him. No, I'm just kidding. I think that the sport has certainly grown, and it's certainly been a big part of the Comox Rec Center itself. I know that there are challenges at times to find space for programming and also for casual play. As someone who was involved in constructing the outdoor hockey box, it was my years already president here back in 1999, I see that there is some benefit to sharing that facility, but I also see some potential conflict. I wouldn't want to see it turned into a pickleball facility, because that's not what it was built for. That being said, there is land next to that that is under lease with the school district that might be a possible location for a court should funds be raised. And I guess I have two questions. One is, have you looked at specific locations in the town? And two, have you done any fundraising yet?
Yeah, so, both three questions. We have looked at verifications of the town, and I think the site you refer to is probably, you know, in my opinion at least, maybe the best option available to us. In terms of fundraising, we were both sit down and begin that exercise. The thought across my mind at least, is that wouldn't our success with respect to fundraising be better if we had some sort of indication of support from a community that willing to sort of, to lease to host the site and to maintain it going forward? So, I guess my question or plea to you today would be, if you could give us some sort of indication of support by way of a letter or something, qualified support, that would be useful in terms of our next step in terms of going forward, seeking funds.
Okay. So, what we do with delegation requests is we essentially get staff to provide us with a report. And we don't generally act on them unless there's an emergency at the same meeting. So, I would expect that staff should be able to provide us with at least a preliminary report in two weeks' time. And then we'd consider your request with all this background material. And then our parks and rec directors can provide input through the staff, head here of CEO, and bring that to Council.
Appreciate that.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you for your presentation. All right, just let the room clear for a second.
Hi, I'm a senior and I've never been to one. I'm a member. Why, am I?
All right, the next delegation I have a conflict of interest on, and Counselor Price will take the chair, and also for the staff report to follow. So, if you have a question, you're done.
If you just got pickleball, then you don't have to come for the interest.
And I have the, I've never had a chance.
Thank you.
Hello. Welcome. Hi, Sean.
My name's Sean Gibson. I'm a project representative for the Lawrence Hotel project. Back in for you today to talk about some changes that we've made to the building and some of the site after the open house from November, and then the subsequent council on the 17th of December. After, after the open house, we've got lots of, lots of feedback from the open house. And we've got lots of feedback based on that from the planning department. And we set out on a path to see what we could do about meeting some of the concerns and the requests of some of the general public and the planning staff. The biggest things that came up were the look of the building, the lack of marine or heritage kind of a feel, specifically to the main, main level. So, we spent some time, did a lot of research on what marine and what heritage would look like on this building, with the help of planning in some regard, and some of it was with our own research. So, I'm going to start, if I can, with the site plan, Marvin. Is it, is it up?
It's, it's slide.
I'll never use the wire, huh?
Point it on.
Okay. So, this site plan that showed is not being in your package today. It was in fact finished by Bruce Lewis today. Couple of the, couple of things that we had to address were, on the Comox Avenue side, where the planter is right down at the bottom, planning, the planning and engineering staff wanted a minimum of two meters clearance between the patio and the planter. In the past, that area's been very tight, general public, the walkway. And I'm not...
Excuse me, Sean, I don't mean to interrupt.
No, no, not that one.
My head is in the way.
You can just say when you want it advanced, and we'll advance it.
Sure. Is there a point for this part of the room?
Uh...
Yes. Yeah.
I have a green sign, see, my chair.
Okay. So, right down in this area, the landlords have agreed to give up a little bit of their property to ensure that the park has a minimum of two meters clearance. Also, on the corner, they've given up a six-meter road dedication for the corner and the sidewalk area, which the town has future plans for seating and whatnot. The tree that's going to be saved is also, you'll see a curb around the tree, something that we worked with the landscape designers to ensure the safety of the tree. There's also the letdowns that in the previous logs were shown. So, all the letdowns on the sidewalks down to the, our driveways, they're all down, shown. So, the rendering, next one. We had, we had provided the planning department with some color boards, and they were actually quite, quite nice, and they had all the colors of the building. But in the last couple of weeks, we decided to take a step out and hire another firm to do a colored rendering of the building, to try to delineate clearly, as clear as we can on a flat screen with a three-dimensional drawing, some of the changes that we've made since the open house and the December 17th council meeting. Planning felt it was very important to highlight the corner facing the intersection of Comox and Port Augusta. So, a couple of things we've done, we beefed up the posts, the covered entry, and we've gone to natural stain as opposed to the white stain that is shown in the last color board. You can see more clearly up here, the old Lauren Hotel had some what they call knee brace accents on all the posts on the front of the building. So, in the corners of the building and all the posts on the main floor, as well as the second floor, all the timber posts all have these knee brace items that are traditionally known as a heritage feature. The blue, the marine blue post that separate the bistro patio as well as the pub patio, a better, this is not a Russian sub, right there. The architects that took the pictures, they took the pictures and they were under a bit of a timeline to get this thing all together for us. This is actually the planter that is this size, that actually is in front of the Lauren Hotel. So, my apologies for any confusion that, or alarm that may cause.
And it's not in the middle of the street.
It's not in the middle of the street, no. So, the, we have to have a barrier from a liquor establishment to the public area. So, those marine blue posts have, they're going to be either chain or polished stainless cable in little loops, and they are in there. You can see one right there, and they loop between, from post to post. So, it gives a real open feel, also that nautical, that nautical feel that you do see on some promenades and decks in other communities. One of the things that we were asked to do is try and draw the, the attention to the main floor of the building. So, in doing that, we had to encompass the second level as well. In the last rendition of the plan, the railings were a mixture of glass, solid, and some picket. Now, when we did our research and looked at some coastal old hotels along the, what do we find, Steepstone, Seashell, Sydney, most of these old hotels, just like the Lauren, had picket, white picket railings on the second floor. And again, that is a, that is a feature that just about all these old buildings had. So, we've incorporated that now into all the decks on the second floor. The, the upper floors, again, we actually, in some of these areas, we had solid walls and glass on the front to create some privacy buffers for the residents that will inhabit the building. The planning department, among the architects, had the consensus that going with all glass and having a real fluid look to the building was, was a much better way to go. One thing I'd like to point out, again, we did do the timber rail, the timber posts up on the third floor here. Again, to try to draw the eye to the corner of the building, which is part of the, part of some of the guidelines, it's a little bit difficult to, to see this, but just to, just to be clear, the, each floor of the building steps back as it goes to the top. Okay? That, that corner is not a, not a solid wall going up. One thing that has come out of the rendering, which we could not ascertain from the one-dimensional plans that the architects were providing for us, was the glass on the front of the building, on the pub and the bistro in particular. Our, our old windows looked quite squatty. They did not give a commercial look and a feel to us. So, now, this has come quite late, and we've asked the planning department, if you guys would consider in Schedule One, that we were able to add this, this extra height for the windows, so that the, both the outside and the inside of the building look and function a little bit better. What else have you got here? The, the plan that you saw at the open house had actually a fairly inconsistent flow of awning, both the retractable awning, which are here and over here, and the fixed covers, which are here, here, and on the pub entrance over here. The pub entrance at the, at the public open house had a glass dome cover, and it didn't flow with the building. So, we actually replaced that so that the, the timber covers with the, with the skylights that go out are consistent for the bistro, the cupboard area where the two-sided glass fireplace is, as well as the pub entrance. That was a big, a big item. The planning department gave us feedback with respect to some of the functional things with where we had bike racks and scooters on the entrance to the pub. We actually footflop those so that the scooters are on the other side. Over here, and you can see it quite faintly, is the area that we've designated 20 feet wide by 10 feet high for a artist mural of the historic Lauren Hotel. There will also be some verbiage on the history of the Lauren Hotel in that same space. And that is actually like a 20 by 10 area, is a big area inside of the building. So, that's going to be quite a feature to try to recapture what was. I'm just going to check my notes here really quick to see if I've missed anything. The, these awnings did not come out that great. They are, if you've ever seen the traditional blue, green, and white roll-up awnings, they add a bunch of vibrancy and color to the front of the building. So, that, that's another thing that didn't come out that great in this rendering. One thing that you can't see in behind separating the bistro and the patio, we've created a little V space that sets back into the patios, that's going to be a small public amenity space. And if any of you ever been to the big cruise ship docks, you see the big cleats. We're going to have probably Ivan Timberframe build cleat seats. So, they, they look like ship cleats, but they're actually these seats for people to sit and face one another while they can sit and watch, you know, people walk by. And those drawings are actually in the package that the planning department has. And I think that's, I think that's here. Thank you. Questions?
All right, so, are there any questions? My, my, Bruce, you asked a question. Have you had any interest in the residential units at all?
No.
Not yet?
We, we can't take deposits on units, because we don't have the disclosure finished. The, the building has to be finalized with the town. But we are now taking letters of interest, actually. And it's surprising the amount of interest this building has been. And I think that as we move forward with the public hearing and then afterwards, it'll, that'll increase. So, there's, I think we've probably got 15 to 20 people that I'd consider more than, more than tire kickers.
Counselor McKinnon?
Yes, thank you, in your worship. I just wanted to commend the, the changes that were made in regards to the history of the Lauren, and that came out loud and clear at the public hearing, that people wanted some reference made to the historical attachment that the community has to the Lauren, both the beams, I certainly like the beams, but also in particular the mural and the verbiage that you say that will address the history part of it. I think that was really important to the community, and I just want to say, I really appreciate that that has been addressed. Kudos to you, I believe, for doing that.
Yes.
I, I do like it. I think it looks great. A question for you, and this might be really putting the cart before the horse, but is it going to be more of a bistro, similar to other restaurants we have in town where it's only open till nine, 10 o'clock? Or the pub part, is it going to be like a traditional pub where it's open till midnight or 1:00? Is that...
I think the pub will probably keep the same hours it had, but we're actually in discussions with George and Karen about actually calling it the Lauren Social House to attract more people throughout the course of our business operations there. George and Karen understand that the, the old way of doing business at the Lauren Hotel with the music blaring down the street is, is not going to happen anymore. It's not, you know, that business model just doesn't work anymore, and it certainly won't work for the new residents. So, yeah, the hours may stay the same, Counselor Ennam, but the operations will change.
Yes, and Counselor Swift?
Sean, how do you seem to remember from one of the previous drives, is there a gathering space beyond, like on that top floor, on the veranda?
Yes, yes. Which you can't see from this 3D, from this, this corner image. And that's actually, I'm glad you brought that up, because in the site plan, one other thing that Bruce Lewis made sure of is that we're under the proposed height in the zoning. The proposed height of it is 19 meters, and then we're at about 17.9. So, we've got about a meter below the zoning height, and that includes all the excursions for the elevators and that social area.
Okay, so, but there would be some kind of a fencing or something up there?
Yes.
Yeah. But would we be seeing that?
Yeah, but would we be seeing that from the road?
You'd have to be a long way down the road, like way down, probably by Berwick before you would see that.
And what's the intention of that space?
That is an, an open space for the residents. So the people in the strata could book that out if they had a family barbecue or, or other function. But not for, not for patrons to come upstairs.
Yeah, not for that space.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any more questions? Well, but it looks like that the, there's some total. I don't know if you have any ideas of how you can get the new look to the building out there to the public.
I bet these guys could do some about that.
I, I think, is that covered in the public hearing?
The, the advertisement, public hearing would say that it was for the rezoning application and anybody who wished to come in and take a look at the rendering and the revised drawings we would have in the building.
Great, so there'd be a bit of time beforehand for people to come and take a look?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Lovely, well, thank you, and so we will move on now.
Thank you for your time.
You're welcome. We can, before the mayor comes up, we all with the staff report.
The receipt of the staff report?
So, okay, yeah, because I've got the, I'm working on the whole.
Yeah, but because they want to add this to Schedule One, so you can, you can receive the, then this one and then the public hearing stuff.
So I'll move receipt of the report.
I'll second.
So we have the report in front of us. So any questions on the report?
I'd like to change just that they made on the screen.
Here, here, I second that. Great, so we have recommendations. All in favor of receipts, good job you're on the ball. And seeing no one opposed, that's carried. And then we have that a public hearing located at the Comox Community Center be scheduled for this amendment.
I'll move that, I'll second that.
And do we need to be putting a date in or that will come later?
We're, we haven't finalized it, but we're looking at, so, May eighth or thirteenth, something in that, that period.
So we have the recommendation to go to public hearing and any discussion? If not?
Do we have to add that, this is what we do?
Okay, so all in favor? Anyone opposed, that's carried. And then we'll allow a little bit of time beforehand for people to come in and see the renditions. So, so this is when we get to the Schedule One?
Schedule.
Okay, that's Schedule One, outstanding items be amended to include floor to ceiling windows on the ground floor.
Move.
Any discussion? All in favor? Carry. Is that all we need to do on that?
Your daughter just went in the house.
You could tell us all about the connect. You could tell us all about the connects and why you're wearing that.
Yes, honey, sure.
Raise your interest in that.
I could have called my first team minutes.
I think you better.
Was it something we said?
Who cares, we're in.
Yeah, but that might be where.
Yeah, probably all muncher y'all, yeah.
Much rather maybe play.
Yeah. Took a minute to be finished with.
We waited for you.
Only you, not me. Welcome to Comox, true.
A D I C C update. It's going to be great weather. Great convention.
Doesn't click on me yet.
Okay. It's on here somewhere.
Yes, I know.
That rehearsals are beneficial.
That's right, yes. Okay, well, and that we could get into Old Canada too.
All right, thanks, anything else for Chris? So next item on the agenda is the planning report from our plant on development application forms and checklists. He's going to receive, provide PowerPoint presentation. That's a form. Thank you.
All those sides.
So the presentation is on the development application forms and checklists that are being rolled out. Thank you. First page outline is just broken down into two components, one is background, so a little bit of history in terms of this, these new forms and checklist where they're coming from. And then to highlight the key initiatives that are actually built into the new forms and checklists, and we'll be using the rezoning and development permit application as the example to illustrate this. It's our most complex form. So in last year, the town adopted Comox Planning Procedure by law, seventeen eighty. The new planning procedure bylaw did standard updating and standardization of application processing procedures. But more importantly, the goals were also to increase the efficiency of application processing and also to assist the customers through the application process. The implementation program for the new bylaw is in process. So we have the pre-application consultation guide. We have that in process, it's probably about eighty percent completed. And we'll just be updating that in regards to the new council initiative to have pre-consultation advertised in the paper. The new application forms and checklists, the rezoning and development permit form and checklist is complete. It's available on our website. Remaining nine applications and checklists we rolled out in several weeks. Internal processing policies, so as we create the new forms, we're also updating our internal processing policies in terms of how those applications get from being received and then showing up on your agendas at public hearing. The next phase will be a roll out of the development potential guide. Corky had a open house with developers about a year or more over a year ago. And one of the things that really was apparent is the request from the development industry for a guide, a process by which they could determine if they were interested in a piece of property, what exactly the development potential was for that property and any upfront known costs such as development cost charges. So we'll be putting that together, finish the turn phases. So key, key initiatives, the first one was process transparency and accuracy. So the checklist, it's a comprehensive checklist. That checklist is the exact same checklist that staff would use to assess whether or not an application is completed. One checklist, both sides are using it. In terms of ease of use, we're looking at everything from small to large. So small things, application form, typically in the past, we've had an application form. Then if you were the applicant and you weren't the owner, you've got to get a separate letter from the owner to allow to act on their behalf, authorization of the owner. We've now rolled out and actually made the application form itself. Similarly, our old form had a number of specifications, and the specifications that they would just were attached. We've now updated those specifications and we put them in a straight checklist, checklist format so they can check what they submitted with their application, it's easily then seen by staff and we can do a faster turnaround time. We're also using that checklist to highlight easily overlooked requirements, sort of give a heads up. And as we have numerous development permit areas, I've seen those actually have implications for what the application itself, as to what material is presented. We've broken that down in the checklist by development permit guideline so that people, people have that, it's easy to use. So in terms of those, the application form is just a straight two, two-page application form. We've taken great care to stop with the filling in same information five times over. So a lot of the details, even on the application, are actually part of the development rationale. So the application form itself is a simple, what is the zoning, what is the zoning that you want? What does the development permit area indicate? Even there, we're trying to use sort of suggestive techniques to guide people to giving us the right information with the right terminology, so we've got things like a development permit. Just listed there, or if you check, if you're in multiple ones, you just check them off your own listing at once. And then the signature, we've even built into this one very clearly what happens if the owner is a corporation in terms of the authorizations that are required. So it's one form that does everything from one individual person, joint ownership to corporate ownership. Straightforward checklist, so we have the intro checklist items, each one of the nice little bots is on the left column. And then we're using the right column to, under the checklist item, if there's additional information, something that's highlighted that's easily overlooked, we've done that in the right column. So something that you can actually read. So EPA specific requirements, so for example, we have here, when we get into the site plans, these different development permit areas are for multifamily development with development permit guidelines require accessible access. So then this is triggering, this is already saying, okay, then show your grades to make sure that we do have accessible access. One of the things that Shaun Vincent was leading to his presentation of revised points. The, and also we get into items of like easily overlooked items. And when the applications are coming in, a lot of these applications, such as the Lorne, are coming in with additional road dedication and also coming in with infrastructure improvements within the road dedication. So the idea that that's clearly, clearly shown in the drawings and we search for it at the beginning as soon as the application is submitted. And also as the heads up, some of these are having encroachments in terms of landscape, doing things like awnings. We start getting very concerned at that time in terms of our liability for those structures and also maintaining our rights in the long term, that we can use it for real public road purposes. So it's the heads up right away that if you're going to do that, that's fine, but then that's going to be a road encroachment. And there's going to be a separate road plan, it's going to be attached to a legal document that then requires annual proof of insurance and clarifies that we have the right at any time to remove those encroachments and use them for public purposes. Vertical integration of the development process, what that really gets at is these rezonings are really starting to touch multiple departments, everything from administration to public works to parks. And so we try to build all of that into the checklist, so everything is there right at the beginning, it's transparent. So we built in the pre-application consultation, i.e. how does a developer then present that so that it's useful information to council? Tree retention and removal, which has caused us several issues in the past as we've gotten into the area, simply because the different professions often utilize different techniques, some as simple as marking trees. Some professions, marking tree is supposed to be removed, the other ones marking tree is supposed to be saved. You go out on site, or the public go on site, you have no idea if this tree's going or not, or staying. Road dedication, just touched on, municipal infrastructure upgrades, road encroachment. E C hydro transformer locations, this has been a real problem over the years. We finally have a resolution to that and I'll give this back in a little bit later in the presentation. Garbage removal, Antara, making sure that they can actually get the trucks in to access the garbage compounds and then tying it into the recent council initiative, the affordable housing calculator, apartment calculator, sound attenuation. And also many of these, especially the lower density multifamily forms like townhouses, they're phased developments. And if we know that they're phased at the beginning, we can build in the necessary phasing allowances so they don't have to commit for a separate development. It's scalable, so rezoning and E P is the master checklist. The other ones will be subcomponents of it, but even there, we try to design it such that we can readily, physically, i.e. cross out sections of the applicant that doesn't apply to a specific application or hopefully be able to do that on the computer and present one clean checklist for it. This one's been really informed, third of application requirements, recognizing the needs of the applicant. It started to become quite apparent, we were frequently very hesitant to dictate certain approvals from other agencies with the outside opinion handed. But we had the request from the development industry and when we started to think about it, well, it made sense. I mean, we're sitting there and saying, you have to go to Antara to get approval. The developer goes, why, he goes up to Antara, Antara goes, what developer? Developer doesn't, he's going to guess, he's going to do the work, going to guess. This is the drawings, then Antara's going to guess on what, how to reference that and give it back to us. So we started realizing that there's a little ping pong ball effect with the development we get into. So the more forms that we actually give and clearly state what is required and it's plug and play for the developer and for that third party, either consultant or agencies like Antara, the simpler it is. Now, so that's what we're getting at, we now have a form that's attached, goes to Antara, we've proofed it with Antara. They know who, they know what they're going to get, who's the contact person, so they're well aware of it. It works with their procedures, landscape estimate, that's another thing where we require a landscape estimate for bonding. A developer then goes to a landscape company and they have various different ways of providing that information, comes back to us, then goes to parks, parks, turns out, says, I need more information, and the whole thing repeats itself. So we now have a comprehensive form that's, yeah, scalable, that they can fill out. We, in terms of the transformer locations, as we're getting to these tighter We, in terms of the transformer locations, as we're getting to these tighter and more dense sites, we're pushing buildings and we're utilizing the site, pushing buildings posting screen. Now, the fundamental problem has always been that the developer then says, we can't tell you where Hydro is going to put transformers until you do our detailed servicing, it's too expensive to do it upfront. And then all of a sudden, we issue the DP, we issue the zoning, and we find out that now the transformer's got a place to be located, and it's in the middle of a sidewalk, and we're compromising our accessibility to the sidewalk in terms of the width. And really I want to credit Eric Jensen at Mathelme and Dylan Doherty, the design manager of EC Hydro, because they both looked at this as to the needs of one of the developer and the other one of Hydro, and especially Hydro now, they're going to third-party electrical design consultants. So they're having to coordinate with this and come up with a solution. They're listed in the checklist as U zero seven drawings, issue for approval, not issue for construction, they can run sixty thousand, eighty thousand dollars on a twenty unit or a thirty unit townhouse development, much more manageable cost. What was really surprising is when we were trying to get the terminology right and make sure that the third-party electrical consultant is also aware of it, that we got back from them saying, oh yeah, this is a really good idea because we're having a lot of problems with this. We're getting stuff in the design stage, and that doesn't work when we actually get out into the site. So, just again, just examples, quick examples. So, pre-application consultation guide, you opt to see something like this. Here, we're going to, we actually give the applicant the property rates, so they see which properties have to be consulted, first stage, second stage, now, and we've actually utilized this in some of the applications that we've midstreamed before you, is what we found was, this works even better, follow this up with an actual form, we fill in, we have the little diagram, opt GIS, we fill that in, we're able to immediately put their contact information business card in there, it says the type of venue, the timing, how the public can comment, what happens if you get it and there's nobody at the door and you still want to comment. So one of the things that often comes before council, then somebody's saying, oh, I wasn't consulted. They're all dress peenist. And so again, that's very much a plug and play, and to our surprise, it's been very well received. It's like, thank you, just tell me what you want, and we'll go ahead and do it. Antera, simple form, right? Your contact information, then it turns around, says exactly what Antera's going to fill out, if there is no residential or it's commercial, where the site is located, oh and hey, here's the drawing reference. And yes, we can either service it or no, we can, because different iterations of drawings, different accessibility issues. And that's it. Any questions?
Mr. Grant.
I've got two quick questions, both on the same line. What are you going to do if someone comes in with an incomplete application?
Incomplete application? It will be returned to them if it's sufficiently incomplete, i.e. if they didn't try, there's a two hundred and fifty dollar processing charge that's applied.
But are we going to start their application unless they bring a completed list back?
We will not start their application, we will not date their application as received until such time as we have a complete application. And we started that process a number of years ago. We just didn't have a comprehensive form to go with.
That's good. My other question then is the exact opposite, is what if I come with an absolutely complete application? One of the complaints that we often hear is, you know, the goalposts keep moving. Does this stop this? Like, if I bring my application, it's totally complete, are there going to be any more changes coming later on, or?
There may be. So this application is going to be, to have a complete application, so if it meets these requirements, it is received, it is dated, it is, referrals go up, processing goes in. We have an upfront process. Council's legal ability to require development approval information such as traffic studies is logically, once you get an application, because then you can see, do you need a traffic study? Chicken and egg for developer, because by that time, they've probably designed your building, and if you do have to do major changes, there are a lot of money. So we do issue preliminary development approval information, saying what has to be required, and professional certification. When an application is being received, and either a staff sees something additional that is required, that wasn't obvious in the first preliminary discussions, or if council sees something, it comes to the council table, and council says, I don't, I don't know the public, you know, what about this? And council says, yes, what about that? Then they have the opportunity to get that additional information. Other than that, I don't foresee. Put it this way, we will constantly monitor this form and update it. If there are things that are not required, or additional things that are required, or changes in regulations, they will be required in turn.
Well, it makes sense, so maybe have a statement in there that says additional information may be required?
It is in there.
It is in there.
Counselor Swet.
And what I understand about this, it looks really good to you, I think it's going to be transparent, and hopefully it will help staff as well as the applicants. I'm wondering if they'll into this, is there any little place for, at the end of the process, for the applicant to provide feedback on the process itself?
Oh, I just think we can reiterate at the final. Should we shy about that? So, I mean, if there is something that isn't working, or something is, you know, over the top, or something like that, it's built, it's scalable, so we can easily adjust it. It can be adjusted on a staff level, so you can do it quickly. And yes, we would be encouraging, but no, it's not a formal case comment. Part of the problem with that too is, we need a case comment, is a lot of developers won't, they actually have a concern, because they have an application process. And then by the time that they're, no longer have an application process, they're busy doing something else, sorry. So I think that when they can just have it clear to the developers, when they're verbally talking, that we are open, and this is definitely a document that has to work for both sides, and we're open to changing that mechanism.
And are there any other communities that have a similar form?
That was part of the interesting thing too, because we thought, like, you know, we didn't want to be overly descriptive and everything else. And then part of the research that was done was small communities, large communities, parks, no, Victoria, Menial, yeah, they have these. I mean, you're not quite as, we have tried to be very vertically integrated on all the different requirements, but there's a lot of similarities, so we weren't reinventing the wheel or being, you know, out of, out of sort of ballpark of what's commonly expected. And again, that was very surprising, I mean, I guess it evolved a little bit more than we have in our processing, and it makes sense for both parts.
Counselor Grant.
I think there's an underlying message here, I'm hearing, and I think what it is, is Comox one more time, is saying, yes, we are open for business, and we're open, we welcome that now. I think, I like the changes for the short time that I have been here and I've seen them, I'd rather.
All right, thanks for that. You're welcome to join us at the table. Thank you, planning staff, while we work on that and bring it forward to us. All right, so moving on to the next item on the agenda, I believe is about the multi-material receipt resolution. This, as I mentioned in the last meeting, is a result of staff's inquiries with U V C M, and they've come up with some wording for a resolution that we could send to, or if this is endorsed here for the U V C M for consideration.
Have you moved a recommendation?
Any discussion further to that? Seeing none, I mean, things may change between now and September, but I think it's a good start, and certainly the Mr. Environment appreciates our efforts in how we're, I don't know if we're speaking to. Yes?
Yes, so how many communities did get left out, do you have any information?
Well, there were five, five larger ones that we knew about for sure, and I think there's still quite a few other small ones. Yeah, there's quite a few that are not part of the process. So, yeah, maybe there'll be more information as we go forward.
And you were right, A V I C C deadline for later presentations was midday today.
Yeah, and I don't believe that it's necessarily something we need to bring to A V I C C, is the other communities that are in the top five or from other places off the island, but U V C M hopefully will receive it well, and then we'll have a chance to speak to it there. Anything further? Seeing none, all in favor? Motion's carried. Right, next item on the agenda has been brought to us by Counselor McKinnon, so let him speak to it and see what he wants to go with it. Counselor McKinnon.
Yes, thank you, your worship. Just regarding public engagement by mayor and council, we already have good access for the public to our elected officials and Comox, and need to say that upfront, you know, the mayor has an open door policy, councilors' emails are available on the Town of Comox website, and we get, certainly get citizen contact through that, and we welcome that. And we, and mayor and councilors presently and individually quite often meet with individual citizens about issues as well. But this public engagement initiative is being suggested to enhance further public engagement by offering quarterly informal coffee meetings with some councilors. And it's intended to have voluntary participation by councilors, and to have three or less councilors participate to avoid a quorum. One of the other councilors, my fellow councilors here suggest quarterly meetings, I'm open, not married to that, but I think it's important for public perception that we continue to open the door for public engagement, and I'd like to try this for a year, it's a formal coffee thing. It may be largely a referral to town staff, things about questions and concerns, it may be more, I think we have to try and see. It's not required for councilors, it would be open to those that want to do so, and I would set up a sign-up there in our mail slots with an indication of the dates on there. What would be clear is that there would have to be at least two councilors there, so we wouldn't have one counselor alone and perhaps get a delegation of people and, you know, put in an uncomfortable situation. My suggestion is that we try it for a year, and if it, and then come back with feedback to council to see if we want to continue.
All right, thanks. Any questions, comments?
I remember, back to an all candidates meeting, when Wendy stood up and said, we used to have these, I'd like to see them repeated. And I very enthusiastically put my hand up and said, yes, I think it's a great idea. I do enjoy a one-on-one, because I think there's a greater communication that way, but I think this is a great way of opening the door, and I'd like to put my hand on this.
Counselor Grant.
Yes, I mean, you could already, you could already do this, I mean, is this just not up to individual councilors? If they want to do this, they can do it. I've seen other places, like Star used to do Walk with the Mayor, I've seen in other areas where they have a, you know, meet with such and such a counselor, and, I mean, I'm not sure if you're asking for a resolution here, I mean, you could already do this, so, you know, I don't know that we need to formalize it, you could just do it.
I'll just respond to that if I can, and, yes, we can do that, but I think, in my mind, I think it's important that we send a message to the public that we want to do it as a group, and that we're inviting the public feedback. And I also need to mention that some members of the public, like all of us, feel more comfortable in an informal setting, having coffee, listening to questions from other people and raising some concerns that way. So that, that in itself, I think, is, makes the effort worthwhile.
Yeah, I think what Counselor McKinnon's bringing forward is something a little more formal than, you know, obviously you can do it now, as you see fit, and whatever place and time you want to meet with something on whatever issue, but this is a bit more formal and scheduled, public notification given, and see who shows up. Counselor, please.
Yeah, and I agree with Counselor Grant and McKinnon that I feel like any commitment at the Brugway meeting to be open to this, and I'm pleased that you're taking the lead and organizing it, so I'd be happy to join those sessions.
Counselor Perez.
Yes, I think it's a great idea, and I think a little bit of support from staff, just making sure that it's on the website and that it's okay with the venues suggested. And I am a great believer in if you actually go out to where people are, you get a much better response and engagement than if you invite them to a community center or the town hall, so I think it's a great idea. Kudos to Counselor McKinnon for having it and proceeding with this. But do we need any, anything formal?
Well, maybe I'll say, I think we probably should have a resolution of some kind, and then staff, are there any concerns? And Counselor Renato, let me speak to everyone.
No, I don't think there are any concerns. A, we don't want a quorum, because once, once you reach that quorum number four, then it's, it's actually a meeting of council, and one that has to be advertised and one that we have to keep records for, so I would encourage you to keep your numbers at three or below. And we will, from a staff perspective, assist with the advertising of the upcoming events using social media as best we can, and our website.
Counselor Renato?
Oh, yeah, I was just going to say, don't forget about those of us who've still worked during the day, so, you know, that includes a couple of councilors here and the public as well, you know, the readings, because that's what I'm looking at.
And I did think about that, and I've written down some contacting all councilors and saying preferred days or times of day in the rotation around for sign-up, so thank you for that.
That's a good idea. And I would just add that you shouldn't forget that, you know, particularly there is younger members of the community, and families, kids in school, for those considerations, whether you want to do one of these at one of the, at the high school or something at some point, that might be an idea as well. And I know that it's time, the time we get asked to go up there and do different presentations, but that might make it a little more inclusive, perhaps, is what I'm looking for. All right, so a motion to support the coffee with Comox councilors proposal was outlined by Counselor McKinnon.
So Lou?
So Lou, secretary. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor? Motion's carried. All right, thank you, counsel, and Counselor McKinnon for bringing that forward.
Your worship. While you were absent, we very quickly skimmed over departmental sports. I wonder, is it possible to go back to that? Because I'd love to make reference to the note Mandy sent to all of us.
Oh, sure.
With regard to this award. Could you give us just a little bit of background before we, I take it to the next step, Mandy?
Absolutely, it's Volunteer Comox Valley Impact Awards, and the reframing department nominated somebody in the past, both one of the character categories. This one actually was the Brad Urther Memorial Award, Grant, and, pardon me, not Grant Award. And it's generally, you're nominating somebody who's made an impact for helping to build an inclusive community for people with diverse abilities. Karen Kratz was instrumental in starting the Comox Valley Little Town Basketball Community and at our center. She came to us several years ago and asked for time and built the program. It also has gone on to include other sports as well, but right now we're basically focused with basketball. So we nominated Karen for the award, and she won, and I'll be presenting the award to her on April eighteenth at the awards ceremony.
May I make a recommendation?
Uh, maybe.
I just want to ask one question, does Karen know?
She does. Okay. I just spoke to her today.
Sorry, go ahead, Counselor Grant.
Well, I was just wanting to suggest that perhaps the town could send a congratulatory note to Karen, a very special award.
Motion required for that, we'll take care of that.
Okay, thank you.
I wasn't sure, like Counselor suggested, whether she knew, but I guess, so I didn't want to send her on her saying, congratulations.
Pee one thing water.
All right, so I'll, I'll sign a suitable letter for that. Next phase here. All right, anything else? Nope. Okay, so we do have a motion to exclude the public under section nine, sub C and E of the community charter. All in favor? Motion's carried. We'll give a few minutes breather here. We'll give a few minutes breather here on that.